Okay, thank you. Good evening, I'll call to order the August 2nd meeting of the Town Plan and Zoning Commission. We'll jump right into our public hearing item and I will call them together. The zoning regulation amendments and the application of fifteen Uncoor Road LLC to amend section twelve point three of the zoning regulations, center design business district post new section twelve point three point twenty-nine, inclusionary multifamily residential use with a housing opportunity or workforce component, and fifteen Uncoor Road zoning compliance application of fifteen Uncoor Road LLC pertaining to the construction of a sixty-three unit residential building pursuant to section eight dash thirty-G of the Connecticut general statutes. I apologize for missing the meeting last week, but I understand now we are in public hearing. The applicant has finished his presentation, the intervenor has finished his or its presentation. We are now at public comment portion. We have with us Mr. Bill Hurley from the Town Engineering Department who is ready to provide some comments for us and since he is generous to show up on off-hours, we wanted to put him first.
Thank you. I just wanted to know, I don't know, do you want to do questions or do you want to know some of my comments?
Oh, sorry.
My voice carries.
Well, this is the mic for WebEx, this is the mic for the room.
Yeah, okay, I won't touch. So why don't we start with just some comments and that will kind of guide the questions that we have and should we have any other questions we will ask?
Okay, sure.
Kind of appropriate.
I guess we can start with the traffic concerns and questions. Some of the concerns I had was the driveway profile, the, from the Sanford Street going up and then going back down, there's an angle point there, it really should be a vertical curve, it was kind of hard to tell the exact slope of, from where the curb is to quote the high point. One of the items, it said three percent, which would be acceptable, but on another one, it said like five or ten percent, so I'm not quite sure, there was a little confusion on that.
Do you know where offhand?
It's where Sanford Street meets where the, it'd be like what we call the driveway apron.
No, I'm sorry, where it said three percent versus where it said five percent?
I, I don't have the exact thing. I, I, um...
That's fine, I'm just asking because if you did...
Yeah, no, sure, no problem. As you know, Laura Pooley from our office did make comments earlier on, on some of these measures. She had thirty-seven years of experience, licensed professional engineer, and, but she recently retired, so that's why I've come in a little after the fact, so to speak. The site distance was another concern that I had. We usually go by the State Department of Transportation site distance guidelines there or requirements and the state, sometimes the state's site distance gets a little confusing. On one time, they'll, they'll say one particular thing like, site distance would be for intersections, like for instance, intersection site distance, and then it's really up to the town to determine, you know, whether a driveway would meet that or not. Sometimes they have in a chart, it refers to if it's an individual residential, you know, there's certain criteria, then there's minor commercial and then major commercial. I would think that this project would probably be in the minor commercial category. That being said, it's not an individual residence, but I don't think it warrants a Walmart, if you know what I mean, for comparison's sake. When you look at the intersection site distance, according to section eleven of the state, state manual there, the highway design manual, intersection site distance should be evaluated at all driveways, however, only intersection site distance for major commercial driveways should be considered a controlling design criteria and will require exemption if the minimal values are not met. But then on the other hand, they say residential and minor driveways will not require an exemption if they are not met, however, the designer should verify that the adequate site distance at an existing drive is not reduced below the minimum values. And so certainly, one could surmise that with this proposal, it's, it's worse than what it is right now, because right now, it's kind of an open parking lot and, and you can see, you don't have to worry about the grades that are being proposed.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Harrison.
Oh, sure, of course.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Hurley, for being here tonight. Now, I'm just looking back up, I know, to me, with the traffic report, pedestrian traffic didn't seem to be accounted, I think, in a very, to me, it was an area of concern, it didn't seem to be accounted for in one of the most busiest areas of downtown. Do you think what we have before us, do you think it lacks, I guess, the proper safety measures to keep pedestrians safe in this area? We have dining, we have schools, we have a train station, we have a taxi service, a variety of things. Do you think people will be safe in this area should this development be passed?
Well, typically, again, when you do the intersection site distance, they're worried about oncoming, you know, cars and being able to pull out in front or make the turn in or out of the site. That being said, one of the concerns I do have is, in particular, the one corner, the, there's, you know, a wall there and it's the edge of the building, and then you have the sidewalk that's not that far from that, and so there is, there would be a concern for pedestrian traffic there.
I have a question.
Is it, well, because I think, I was hoping the question was more on the sightline stuff. Is it to the sightline?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it involves the sight?
No, it kind of, yeah, but the sightline with ISD versus what they're suggesting with parked cars and all that, I wanted to kind of get into.
Right, yeah.
That's where you were going.
Yeah.
But Commissioner Braun, go ahead.
So, two questions. Can you explain what it means to have an exemption? You're saying if there's a DOT guideline manual for highway and road construction, and then you're saying the category, we seem to fit in as the middle category of minor commercials, because it's a large apartment building, so it wouldn't be a single-family home, it wouldn't be Walmart. And then you're saying with minor commercial or if it was a single-family home, those are like the lesser of the categories, however, even with those, you still don't want it to be worse than it is now, but then you said something about an exemption, I don't know what that means.
Okay, yeah, well, again, the state highway manual is really geared to the Connecticut Department of Transportation. When you go for a proposal, you usually have to apply for, if it's a large enough one, ASTA, which is the Office of State Traffic Administration, and then you do Department of Transportation encroachment permit. And that encroachment permit is where the exemptions would occur. So if you had an exemption, you have to basically, much like, it's almost like a zoning board of appeals, you know, you have to go in, explain why you would get exemptions. Usually, they would be granted on technicalities, something minor, but when it comes to safety, they're usually denied.
So what does encroachment mean then?
Oh, oh, encroachment would be, yeah, for the state, every time there's a proposal that goes into the state right-of-way, with a driveway apron, if you were doing new sidewalks, you're in the state right-of-way, and so it's called an encroachment permit. For the town, we kind of call it a street opening permit.
Okay.
Similar, similar case.
So, even though the DOT is intended to regulate state roads, this is not a state road, I assume?
That's correct, it's a local one.
We still could use it as guideline, but we could go beyond that for safety?
Uh, right, yes, you can, we, you make a good point, we use it as a guideline, if we don't have anything specific, we know if it meets the state's standards, we would usually say it grants approval unless there's a special localized situation that the state may not be aware of.
And then, thank you. And then I have a more specific question, because this came up that, you know, when we were talking to the architect, I guess, he said that they cut out part of, I don't have a rendering here, but they cut out part of the building so it wouldn't affect sightline? I, I don't, I don't, without saying rendering, it's hard to tell, but would that have been solved by this, or is the only sightline problem the building, or is it more than that?
It's, the sightline for pedestrians is more of the, of the building issue. There is somewhere else in town where someone pulls out and there's just no sightline for them and no sightline for the pedestrians, and it, it's been a concern for the town. We made, we made some improvements to it, and luckily, no one's been hurt there, but it's, it's less than an ideal situation. In that particular area, it was like grandfathered way back, so that's why.
So you talk about pedestrians, do you mean the pedestrian seeing a car or a car seeing a pedestrian?
No, it would be a car hitting a pedestrian, yeah.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
If you can go back to where you were, you were talking about ISD.
Right, right.
And I have some questions more on that, but if you could just get into that.
Sure, there was, there was one other concern before we get into that is cars entering and exiting, there's a turning radius, I, I didn't really see any analysis on that. And you just want to be able to make sure that a vehicle can make the turn in and make the turn out, especially that they don't cross, you know, the double yellow line, so to speak, making a right-hand turn or a left-hand turn.
And it's so careful.
Usually the right one. And then coming in, I noticed when you go to the down, the basement garage, you know, underneath, there was the ramp, and then all of a sudden, you have to do a right-hand turn and then a quick, another right-hand turn to get to access. I'm not saying it's not there, I didn't, I didn't have a chance or time to look at it, but that's definitely a concern that I would say is the turning movements within the garage and turning movements to get out of the garage onto Sanford Street.
Okay.
Those are the concerns that I have on that. And then, again, going by the state's recommended driveway, you know, they're looking at five to eight percent, and as I said before, I think one of the plans I saw thirteen percent was a ramp going down.
But the state was five to ten percent, and that's for the...
Five to eight percent.
Five to eight, uh, for what, the pitch of the driveway?
Right, yeah. And then we can go into the intersection site distance. I do remember a situation that, that came up about ten, fifteen years ago with the police commission, and we met with the state at that time and said, are typically parked cars considered in the sight distance, intersection sight distance? And they, and the state standard, or the state even in here, it says that you usually don't consider a parked car in a sight distance analysis. I can probably get you that exact quote if I can find it here.
Now, is that just a blanket rule, or not, is there discretion for this commission, for any commission to...
It was, uh, yeah, yeah, thanks, I have it right here. Um, yeah, just quote quoting, and this is where, again, from a town standpoint, we have, in the past, taken both sides of that. I'll use the example on Beach Road, okay, there was a proposal, I think it was eight dash thirty-G as well, and I honored the state's recommendation of no, don't count the parked vehicles. That was also, though, based on, they had the ability to put no parking if, if, if it was passed by the police commission, and the fact that in the dozens, it's been more than, but even the dozens of times that I went out, different days, different times to look at it, I never saw any, anybody parked there. So, you know, if a car is occasionally parked there, I'm just going to arbitrarily say ten, twenty percent of the time, you wouldn't consider, and you would honor the state one. With Sanford Street, though, I've been out there a dozen times and every, I'd say eleven out of twelve, there was always cars full at Sanford Street, and that's a concern, certainly from eleven o'clock in the morning to probably ten at night, there always seems to be cars parked there. And so even though the state may say you don't include it, in reality, we, we have a car always there, I think it should be included.
Okay. And you, and that's opinion based on...
Based on local knowledge, my experience, I've been with the town for thirty-two years, there's not too many times in that time where I've seen Sanford Street empty, maybe at eight o'clock in the morning.
That's fair. And just for the record, because I'm not sure if we, I know we introduced you as a member of the Building Department, uh, excuse me, the Engineering Department.
Mm-hmm.
Why don't you just take this time, because I'm going to ask you your opinion based on reasonable, what's the word, reasonable engineering certainty? What's your background?
Sure. I've been with the town thirty-two years, twenty-two as the engineering manager, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, I have a bachelor's of science of civil engineering from Syracuse University, so...
Okay. And, because this is, you, you raised, the commission one discussed this at length, the parked cars with the applicant. We've had instances, previous application on Beach Street Road, where we had an issue with parked cars, and I think it was either you or someone in the department had said it should not be taken into account because of the frequency that you just mentioned, the intermittentness, if that's the right word, over on Beach Street. And I remember, I think we might have had a discussion about, hey, you know, if it was downtown Fairfield or some other place, that's different. So, it's your opinion that as far as safety is concerned, that parked cars should be considered for this ISD, inter, the sightline analysis?
Right, because they're always present, or, you know, relative.
As we've discussed, they're, they're not a one-to-one parking, as far as parking spaces to units in this building.
Oh, that, yeah, that's another story, yeah.
Oh, yeah, so, but the idea is to use, to your point, it'd be more frequent for these residents to be parking, not just on the street, because at least, was it fifteen, we're talking to Delta?
Correct.
So fifteen, at least fifteen cars, assuming you have one-to-one, and that's an assumption, but I think that's a fair one, at least fifteen are going to be off-street parking, they're going to be as close as they can to the building, which would leave that space right there open. So, keeping all that in consideration is another, I would think, another factor is to, your point about it being more frequent.
Right, correct.
At all times of the day, really.
Right, and if they, you know, again, depending, everybody's different, if they get home at nine, ten o'clock at night, they might be able to find a spot relatively close if there's no events going on and it's not, you know, Thursday, Friday night with the restaurants might be busy. However, you know, if, if it's, if they get home at three in the afternoon also, it might be an issue because there's always cars there.
Yes.
If they get, you know, so it can, it can vary, you know, on the, on the situation. But again, just from my personal experience, it, it seems like, you know, right before lunchtime, when workers start getting in there, and up until, you know, dinnertime, which could be eight or nine, and then even a little bit later, if there's a event going on at either the movie theater, the, uh, the, whatever, I'm trying to blank on it.
No, the restaurants, there's train stations, there's everything.
Right, exactly.
F T C, there's the only, yeah.
F T, thank you.
Um, but what part of this is, we're going to have to make a determination whether this application substantially impairs health, public safety, welfare, et cetera. I mean, in your, in your professional opinion, based on a reasonable degree of engineering probability, certainty, do you believe that we need to include the parked cars in part, with respect to ISD?
In, in this situation, I think you should, yes.
And I believe if you do that, do they have the proper sightline?
Uh, no, they don't.
Okay.
Uh, the other thing to mention, too, again, knowing the area, doesn't happen all the time, but there, there's a lot, there's really no official loading zone, you know, for the restaurants there, and so many times, I've driven on that same street and it's either double parked or they even have a, a truck there, which obviously wouldn't improve the situation either.
Do you think ISD is needed over, the other one is called, what, stop, stopping sight distance?
Uh, yeah, because again, this is, they're, they're pulling out, the stopping sight distance is more for, you know, if you're going straight ahead and there's an object in, in the road or, uh, you know, um, yeah, they'll just leave it at that, to be simple, yeah. Um, let's see, what else, terminal radiuses?
Let me just ask one, I guess, the follow-up, just of, if I haven't hit the nail in yet. Is it your opinion that because the sight, the sightlines are insufficient, as we've discussed, that that, based, in your opinion, based on a reasonable degree of engineering probability or certainty, renders this application a substantial impairment to the health, welfare, safety of Fairfield residents?
Unless it can be addressed.
Unless it can be addressed, but I...
But again, yes, standard thing, if you had the room and you say, all right, well, we'll just make no parking, you know, sixty feet on either side or whatever to get, then that's fine, but obviously Sanford Street, unless you're going to replace those parking spots, I, I just don't see that happening.
Okay.
The Chamber of Commerce and business owners have made it clear, even when we've tried to do some intersection improvements or something like that, that they are totally against losing on-street parking.
Any other questions, at least with respect to this particular thing, and we can move on? Commissioner Braun?
When you said sixty feet, is that sort of just by analogy, is that like a real number, or is there an actual number of feet that you would have to eliminate parking in order to...
It would all depend on, on their sight distance triangle that they have. And again, some of the things, and I don't want to confuse, but this is where, you know, you have to use the experience and, and the situation, because in that, in the, in that same paragraph, you know, they talk about the presence of permanent fixed objects, buildings, parking lots, so they even say parking lots, but then on another hand, they say you don't include the parking. But, so that's where, you know, things can get a little confusing, but as I said before, because there are permanently parked cars there, I would include that. The other thing, though, it even says even here, "Commercial drives and multi-resident drives shall meet the same ISD standards as street intersections." So that was another reason, what you, I'm just leading into some of the things that you mentioned.
Street intersections require the consideration of parked cars?
Um, well, first of all, you can't legally park within twenty-five feet of an intersection. And to, uh, to the point being made of, you know, sixty, I was using that as example, sometimes it's twenty feet, forty feet, sixty feet, so it was, uh, it was just as an example of how it could be corrected, I'm not, you know, saying it couldn't.
Did I hear you say that in the guidelines, they sort of give examples of what would be considered a permanent obstruction, and in one instance, they do mention that a parking lot, I guess filled with cars, could be considered a, because I, that's not the section I, my attention was drawn to that we got copied, though, it's somewhere else it must have a difference.
Well, it was, it was just above that, but I think, again, from the state's point of view, is that if the building or parking lots, because you can't do that, you, you shouldn't have that stuff in the state right-of-way, so I think for the majority, they're referring to private parking lots. But again, if they include a private parking lot as parked car, you know?
Okay.
In a case, I'm, I'm using my experience to go a little further.
So even the state acknowledges that a parked vehicle can be considered an obstruction?
Uh, that would be correct, and as I said, I would, though, use it on a case-by-case basis where, as I said, there's plenty of spots where there's not much on-street parking, and, and if there's an occasional car there, I would not include it.
Thank you.
But in this case, Sanford Street, maybe another exception, you know, Reef Road or just where just so many, you know, cars are on the street, and then sometimes it matters even on the roadway width. The post-road, because it's so wide, you know, the parked car might not even be in the way of the sight distance triangle, because that was the other thing that you can use to measure intersection sight distance, and I want to try to clear it up a little bit. In the state regs, they say fifteen feet from the edge of the road, but then they said in tight or unique situations, you could go to fifteen feet from the travelway. And so, on this case, I would say it's either fifteen, you know, from the edge of the road, or fifteen feet from the, from the travelway, where the travelway would be minus the parked cars. So, they could be theoretically, if you, if a parked vehicle is, say, seven foot wide, if they're from the edge of the, the road, or where the curb line is, if they went another eight feet back with their sight distance measurement, that would be okay. I don't know exactly where that, that distinction was on the plan. By eye or scale, it looks like it could be anywhere from six to eight, but I'm not sure. If it's only six, well, then they got to move it back a little bit further, so that would be something I'd ask them to confirm, of where that sight distance point was.
They are, yeah, and we always have, they're listening in, and that's a question I would hope and expect they would do. I don't think that changes any of your previous testimony about the safety of...
Oh, no, no, it would probably make it worse for them, if they were only at six, then they'd go back further. If they're at eight, well, then the same thing applies.
Commissioner Braun?
So, could you clarify for me, fifteen feet from where to where, would that, clarify that for?
Fifteen feet, the state regs say fifteen feet from the edge of road, but then...
For what?
Um, for the sight distance triangle, so I'm going to try to do it visually, if this table was the edge of the road, all right, I have to go back fifteen feet, with a three-and-a-half foot high driver's eye, and then look across diagonally at a three-and-a-half foot high object, so that's where I, I get it. So if you have a parked car or, or another obstruction that blocks that, a tree even in some cases, then you have to move that or do something about it in order to improve the sight distance.
Okay, thank you.
So I hope that clarified it. But they do allow you to go fifteen feet from the travelway, as well.
Like on a sidewalk or on the...
Well, yeah, so if we're, if, you can't have it both ways, so if you, if we are counting the parked cars, well, then that gives them the, the ability to do this sight distance triangle from the edge of the travelway. I just want to make that clear.
Okay.
Commissioner Francis?
I think your statement about loading zone is very relevant, too, because with all the restaurants around those two, three blocks, Post Road, Tim Burger, and Uncoor, there are frequently large trucks loading, so it won't just be a car blocking your sightline, it will often be a box truck.
Right. And another thing we look at, too, is, you know, if there was two driveways and one of them, you know, met it and the other one was a little, well, then it might be, you know, an option to, to take that other driveway or not, or do the best you can with it, but this, these are the only ways in and out, and that, that was a concern that I had.
That's another question.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, thank you. Um, there's an, I think you probably are aware of this, Mr. Hurley, there's an intervenor involved with this application now?
Mm-hmm.
And they raised several points at the last meeting, and I want just to go back to some of the points you were making about the ramp, and they were, they were citing some issues, some safety issues related to the grades of the driveway ramp. Can you talk more about that? I'm not super familiar with ramps and, and that, I just want to get more insights on their conclusion and, and what you think is there or not there.
Okay, because he also, they, the intervenor also mentions sanitary sewers and, uh, stormwater, so I just got to try to find the, the traffic ones. But essentially, some of the things that the intervenor mentioned, no grading is shown for the ramp to provide ingress and egress to the below-ground parking facility. Again, on some of the drawings, I saw, I did see that labeled, but I did not see it labeled as, as clear on the, the section between the curb and we'll call it the high point of, of the ramp. Um, let's see.
Are there design standards that go with constructing a ramp?
Um, it, it can vary, again, depending on the, the situation. We here in town don't have a specific regulation of that, but engineering practice is typically, the first twenty feet should be three percent or less, then it can vary anywhere from eight to fifteen percent, and then where you get close to the garage, so to speak, it would be flat again, at three percent or less. Um, and then... Um, and that's basically to prevent cars from bottoming out, or, or having, if there's a, you know, a drainage or an icing situation perhaps as well. Um, but that's the general, general rule of thumb. The state, uh, they divide it up, as I mentioned before, like if it was residential, they're saying ten to twelve, minor commercial, five to eight, and same with major commercial. So the state kind of breaks it up depending on the, the use.
So twenty feet, three percent, eight to fifteen percent, and then three, three percent again? Is that?
Yeah, yeah, right. That's, that's what, uh,
Okay.
typically is, is used.
And do we have that here, or?
Uh, I'll be honest with you. I, I think the, um, the, uh, middle section is, is too steep. Um, and I'm not sure, as I mentioned before, I'm not sure of what the existing slope was. Because on the one, the cross-section, it's, the grades aren't quite labeled.
Okay.
And so I, I don't know. One of the, the other concerns, which at least from the scale drawing, uh, you know, the, that they have, um, one thing that engineering would look for, now, again, I don't know if it's right for denial or not, but, uh, we would make them, uh, improve the situation, uh, if they, or revise the situation. Um, when a sidewalk is present, the ADA is a two percent or less cross pitch. So sometime, you know, when they, if they have a driveway that goes through that sidewalk, they still have to keep that flat area. So I don't know if they did, say, point A to point B, and let's just say it's even four percent. Well, you have to have one area to be two percent where the sidewalk is. So, you know, you can't just do a straight line.
Right, yeah, you got it.
You have to kind of terrace it.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if they've done that.
Okay. So you're saying, so the first twenty feet, you're talking about from the road up towards the building, the garage rather, right?
Right, yeah. From Sanford Street curb line up. That's the first twenty feet.
That should be under, less than or equal to three percent.
Right. And then again, in the area of the sidewalk, though, it has to even be less than two percent.
But it, where does the three percent start? Do you mean?
Oh, it, no, it, for, again,
When does it become three to?
For, for gen, for general driveway,
Okay.
it's three percent. But in this case, because there's a sidewalk there, in order to meet ADA, that apron has to be two percent or less for where the sidewalk crawls.
And if they're exceeding that, which we don't know because their cross-section diagram?
Right. Or I, uh, yeah, or it could be clear. They, they could confirm that or, or not. I, I don't know. But, uh, that was a concern, I think.
If they exceed, it seems odd that they would exceed that, unless they don't have room between their.
Or if they really did it rather quickly. I, I don't know. I mean, sometimes, you know, you're trying to get a submission out, and they may have just done it really quick. I don't know. And, or they may have even meet it. I'm just saying that that, that should be, uh, definitely brought up or confirmed that they have that. Because it was not clear to me, in my review. Um, let's see, what they, uh, so he even mentions, yeah, the ten percent grade, uh, um, uh, he's saying ten percent at the intersection of a driveway to a town road, uh, which is too steep, and I would agree with that. Um, he talks about a ninety percent, uh, turn at the bottom of the ramp inside the garage. I would agree with that. Um, I'm just trying to highlight, because some, some of the comments he has are relatively minor. Uh, I may, uh, agree with them, or I may kind of take a neutral stance to them. Uh, but I'm trying to highlight the ones that really make a, a difference. Uh, the parking spaces, again, the ITE manual, Nationwide Manual, has, uh, for, um, for parking and for even trip generation that are being used. I'm sure they followed that. Uh, but sometimes locally, um, uh, you, you might exceed that. And again, I think somebody, uh, I think the, uh, chairman brought it up where, um, you, you know, if you have a two-bedroom house, and they're telling you it's a half a car, you know, uh, per hour generated, you kind of have to, you have to think about it. Now, again, it is possible. Sometimes they only do the peak hour, and if you have somebody leave at nine, eight o'clock, or seven to eight, and somebody leave at eight to nine, well, then it still only counts during that peak hour. Uh, what I'd like to do at some point, again, if, if time ever permits, or if, if the commission felt it was that important, um, I was trying, uh, was going to make the suggestion a couple of years ago, that the town maybe perform a local study of parking of similar projects. You know, I know you have the one, um, uh, at the end of, I think, is it a Rising or Fairchild, uh, the one where Nello's property used to be, and then, uh, and then a couple of other ones. And then just find out, you know, are we close to the national average, or are we way off? I think that wouldn't be a, a bad idea. But obviously, the last two or three years with COVID, you know, you, you couldn't, you couldn't suggest that. But something for the future, maybe, to, um, to at least take a look at the parking rates and the, um, trip generation. Just wanted to mention that. Um, let's see if he's got any others regarding the, um, he talked about unclear for parking space number seven. I, I didn't, I didn't look at that. Um, and, uh, yeah, it seems like his concerns was the ramp dri, the, both sides of the ramp and, um, uh, and, uh, turning radius. Those were some of his similar concerns, so.
Um, somewhere I read, I don't know if it, I think it might have been in Mr. Went's synopsis, um, that the width of the driveways seemed to be too narrow compared to what they should be. I'm trying to remember.
Hold on.
Yeah, I think, uh, uh, I, I did not see that in, in my review, but I know in, um, just, uh, where Jim had asked me, uh, something, uh, similar, where he had said something about, I think they have twenty feet here and twenty-four there. And if that twenty, that twenty feet, it, it should be twenty-four consistent.
What's the difference between, I mean, why does it matter twenty to twenty-four feet width?
Uh, well, um, it gives you room to maneuver. Uh, uh, not everybody stays, quote, in-between the yellow line, if you know what I mean. Uh, it also provides a little bit of a shoulder. Uh, if there's a little bit of snow removal, in some cases, you need a place to, you know, push the snow. Um, for parking spaces, that twenty-four aisle is important, because if you back out of a car, and we've seen, you know, if people go a little too far, they, they may hit the, the back of a, of a parked car. So you want that twenty-four-foot aisle for, for maneuverability within a parking area as well. Um,
You're talking about twenty-four feet each way, right?
Well, no, for two-way traffic, two-way traffic.
Oh, for the same twenty-four feet?
Right.
Or going in and out?
Yeah. Yeah, typically, most state lanes are twelve-foot, you, you know,
Oh, okay.
each direction. So that's where the twenty-four comes in. Um, for people's driveway, you know, it is very infrequent, or we might even have a couple of commercial establishments where, you know, if they only have parking for three or four cars, it might only be twelve or fifteen feet. Um, not ideal, but based on the low volume, if there's good sight distance, you know, maybe they could get away with it. But here, if there's, you know, walls, like, if somebody mentioned pedestrian activity, you got cars coming and going, uh, I think the twenty-four should be, uh, a requirement.
Could that create a safety issue in a congested area if it's just the twenty-feet person?
If it's, if it's less than twenty,
Your car's, you have it.
If it's less than twenty, i- it's certainly not an ideal situation.
Or less than twenty-four.
And, and, uh, twenty-four seems to be the engineering standard. It's, if I recall, it's the zoning regulations as well.
Commissioner Francis?
And I think what you're recalling too, Commissioner, is the ramp going down, that Mr. Went's notes said it was too narrow in some places, didn't meet standards because of the abutments.
And then just to, just, and again, even while, um, going with, uh, parking spaces, uh, um, even, uh, if, I think this, the commission has, what, typically like nine feet or eight and a half with a half, uh, or eight feet with a half a foot buffer on either side. Uh, that's a good standard. Anytime you go into a parking garage or some other ones, it's a lot narrower. And then you have every fourth one, somebody's over the bounds, because they're really too narrow. And so that's something to consider as well. But I believe they met, I believe they met that, uh, with the, um, the, the parking width, the parking stall width.
Just, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Just to be clear, so when we're talking about this difference between twenty feet of width and twenty-four feet of width, my understanding from the plans is that there is twenty-four feet of width, uh, in the parking areas, but that it narrows to less than twenty feet for the driveway?
That's correct.
Okay.
That was my understanding as well, yes.
And that, that, that driveway width, you're saying, is not sufficient for safety purposes?
Right. Where you're, where you're coming in, and if there's ramps involved, and, and you can't see, you know, on the other side of the ramp, yeah, you, you need that, you need that extra space.
Commissioner Braun?
The width concerns when you're trying to get in from right angle off the road, and you only have ten feet on your side to get in? Or is it just, is that the main concern when you're getting in and out of the driveway, or just even driving along the driveway?
That, that is, that is a concern, yeah. That is, you're turning in, because sometimes, you know, you go beyond, you know, uh, if it was only ten feet, you may go two feet into the other lane, sort of.
And also, somebody brought this up, one of the commissioners brought this up, that if people don't, if they don't have assigned parking, um, maybe they will have assigned parking. People won't know if they can find a parking spot, so the people, cars will be driving in and out more frequently if they don't have spots inside, which we know, admittedly, there will be overflow parking. And then another, that could be worsened if several spaces are lost on the inside for other stuff that happens. Somebody mentioned something about drainage, or if you, if, if any of those parking spaces inside are going to be eliminated, then the overflow parking problem would be magnified. And then you'd possibly have more of a problem with people going in and out looking for spots?
Um, yeah, there's a possibility of that, sure. I, I know my personal experience, you know, when you look for a parking spot, you get frustrated if you don't have it. Now you might be going a little bit faster, you know, and, and things like that. It's possible. But whether, um, if they meet the criteria, the, the applicant engineer, they meet the criteria, you, you can't, I, in my opinion, you can't ask them to go more than what's asked. But the twenty-four is the zoning standard, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, I think that was pretty much, uh, that was pretty much it for the, the traffic. Um, going back, again, with the intervenor, some of the things, I, I'll just switch on. I did agree with them on, um, uh, something about, it was like really a tight site, and during construction, uh, let me see if I can find that.
Zero setback construction?
Right, yeah. Uh, I mean, even on the architectural plans, the footings show at least, you know, a foot beyond. So if you're right up to the line, you're, you're trespassing, whether it be in the public right-of-way or on private property, a foot, uh, in, into that, um, you know, for, and, um, that was a, a concern of mine, uh, um, as well. Um, let me think here. Uh, uh, yes, no, yeah, his comment sixteen, I, I totally agree with that one. Um,
Just for the record, just, you can just say briefly what it is?
Okay. The building is proposed to have a zero setback. You simply cannot build a proposed building as shown for the following reasons. Footing to support the exterior building, um, a minimum of three or four foot, uh, must be excavated outside the limited building, and, you know, in order to get access and port forms and all that kind of stuff. That's a general opinion, but it's, it's, it's probably, uh, uh, it's, I would consider that accurate. It wouldn't be a requirement to have that, but it's certainly accurate. Uh, footing drains, um, are required for foundations, uh, deeper than forty-two inches. Uh, and I guess, um, proposed, uh, footing drains would, uh, um, this one I wasn't as sure of. But A and B of sixteen, uh, I definitely agree with. Uh, for, um, comment C, I would just put it as a concern where the applicant should show, um, if the footing drains and how they're tied into the drainage. Uh, definitely for that. And then the, um, and then the other thing with this, and even the drainage or the traffic or anything, this, this is, uh, trying to fit, you know, ten pounds of, uh, potatoes in a five-pound bag, or whatever analogy you want to use, um, is that there's just no room for any field change, and this is just opinion, but there's no room for, uh, field change. If there's something that has to, because you're using up the whole site, uh, that, it doesn't give you any room for error anywhere. And that was a, a concern that I, that I had. Um, the rain garden, uh, um, uh, that was a relatively, uh, I think it's kind of small, and, um, it probably should be, uh, bigger, in my opinion. Um, I did have, we, uh, I don't know if Laura had reviewed that or not. She did say that the drainage report, the drainage report met the engineering standard, so I, I'll, I'll take her word for that. Um, but, uh, one of the concerns that she had, I had, and same with the intervenor, is, uh, the groundwater table. Uh, they mentioned that, uh, you know, they went nine feet and didn't hit any groundwater. But then, right above that, it said mottling or models at eight feet. And so, uh, that might be, that's what you should be going by, is at eight foot, uh, because, uh, that's kind of like what, another term would be a seasonal groundwater table. So based on that one, uh, the water table's a foot higher than what they say, than, for that test hole at nine feet.
What does it mean for the, uh, the soil to model?
Uh, it, it usually is, um, uh, it's a well-defined, when you do a, a per, I mean, a deep test, and you see, it will usually be some sort of gray layer. Um, it's, um, it, uh, it's a kind, a combination of, um, uh, clay, but it has some sand. And so the, uh, the water table actually, uh, goes up to that level, from, you know, from the bottom. And then it kind of, I guess it, because it's gray, it might be like a little bit of a, um, and I'm not sure on this, like an organic, but it, but it, it's a definite layer of where the groundwater table is, is, is done.
Thank you.
Um, in some cases, if it's not a gray layer, but it's a thick clay layer, then obviously that gives you an idea of where that would be impervious after that. So the, it gives, the, uh, test pits give a clue to where the water table is. If you're digging, like at this time of the year, you know, you can still estimate where that would be. Um, and, uh, let me see, uh, for the, uh, stormwater, um, uh, he does mention that the, uh, stormwater, the state stormwater manual says you should have three feet, uh, separation to the groundwater table. Um, in Fairfield here, we, we use, usually between eighteen and twenty-four inches. Uh, the reason being that any development on Fairfield Beach Road, or in, in any, uh, area where there's a higher water table, to get that three foot of separation around, in certain areas, is impossible. So we usually take the liberty of maybe lessing it a little bit. But you, we don't allow it to go to zero or only a foot. You need, you need more than that.
Okay.
So I just wanted to point that out.
For the test pits, uh, the test that they did, do you remember when they did it? Was it in November?
Um, actually, I think I have, if I have it here. I think I even made a copy of it somewhere. And, sorry to be
No.
taking time and, and jumping around. I, I mean, if I was doing a presentation, it would have been a little bit different. But I want to make sure I answer the.
We have a hot ten here, too.
November nineteen.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay. Does the time of year affect, like, November, fall, as opposed to spring or summer?
Well, the high, the highest time of year would be typically springtime, you know, February, March, April, depending on. Now, you could, I don't know, it was like maybe four or five years ago, I remember we had a very rainy summer. And so, you know, you might have gotten a, a little bit more reflective. Or there was another time where, you know, we had a lot of rain in the fall, or conversely, drought in the fall.
True, yeah.
So it does play into it. And that's where, as I said, that mottling layer usually gives you a clue. Or if they did it in a historic, uh, time of, um, where it's been decent amount of rainfall to go by.
Yeah, and I don't know how it was back.
Yeah, I, I don't either. I mean, we could research and find out, but, um, at least it wasn't, you know, July and August where you typically would have that.
And I mean, any thoughts about their, that because it was done in November, and only one was done, and I think they relied upon another historical one that was?
Yeah, the town had hired, when we had a green infrastructure grant, we hired a, a company at that time called Malone McBroom, and they did a, a, I don't know, maybe a dozen or so, uh, uh, test pits, uh, where, you know, just to give a feel of where groundwater infiltration and recharging would be available.
Any concerns that, considering where we are, how close they were to the table, and the flooding issues we have down there, that reliance upon those two, one the historical and one they did, is insufficient?
Um, under norm- Um, under normal circumstances, having a couple of historical ones, they did, I believe, two of them on their own. The site's not that big, it would probably, probably be okay.
That's fine.
Um, but you had mentioned before where, um, we know this area is prone to flooding. We know, uh, that somewhere in, in the area, there's a couple of, uh, commercial properties that have basements and they've been pumping water. And obviously that, you know, if we get rain and they're pumping water, that hurts our capacity of our storm system.
Yeah.
So, um, definitely a concern, and if they did additional testing, it might prove their point, but it wouldn't hurt. Uh, I think, um, if there was ever a quote approval of condition to maybe require that, is not out of realm. Just to make sure, you know, again, we're dealing with a, you know, significant project and to, um, to confirm that water table. Um, again, I wouldn't do it now, you know, especially with the drought that we're having now.
Sure.
But, um, at some point, that's reasonable request.
Commissioner Francis?
Are there any standards for doing, for ideally connecting water tests, collecting water tests? Is it high tide, high wet seasonal, or are there ideal standards when you should do these?
Well, again, you should be designing for what should be very close or the worst case. And so if someone provides deep tests and perk tests, uh, and, um, they do that in, say, the springtime, if it's a typical spring, that would be considered like the worst time. So that would, you would say, all right, that's good, that's a good, uh, synopsis of that. In times away from that, it gets a little bit harder, because, uh, sometimes you have an applicant or a developer where, being honest, time is money. And if they have a proposal, say, at this time of the year, uh, or they have it, say, in the fall and they did it at this time, you know, they don't want to wait six months or eight months for the, uh, situation, uh, to where they, the ideal situation to measure that. But you can, there's some ways you can do that, uh, you can, you know, you can do a deep test and, again, look for the mottling. You could, uh, if you follow the true perk test, where you saturate the hole and you do those tests, that could at least give you an idea of, um, a better idea than just, um, waiting for the best time. So I hope that made it clear for you.
Commissioner Brown?
Just to understand how groundwater works, so you have groundwater down here.
Mm-hmm.
And you have, they measured it and supposedly it's, I don't know, somewhere between eight to ten feet below grade, which is.
Right, right.
So, the base, the bottom of the basement then is supposed to be two feet above where the groundwater is? Is that what you're saying? The bottom of the basement should be above, there should be two, twenty-four inches between the bottom of the basement and the top of the groundwater?
Right, right, in, in the, um, the stormwater quality or the intervenor says three feet. But being honest, as I said, in Fairfield here, and to be fair, uh, you know, we have, in cases allowed, two feet.
But do we do that more down on the beach where there's more sort of.
Well, it could be the beach, it could be near, you know, a river, and again, it.
Is there a difference between that and the sort of congested area downtown where there's nowhere for water to go, it seems?
Well, that, that would be, um, uh, what was I going to say, uh?
Would that mean you should have more distance?
Well, well, again, if, if, if it's two feet, um, three feet's better, three feet's better, uh, for sure. But, um, two feet, I, I'm trying to be, we try to be consistent, you know, you don't want to, uh, now, again, we could have used a special case card of, oh, you know, do the flood in and all this.
Well, there a reason to have a greater separation of distance in a more congested paved over area versus an area that's more open? Or that doesn't really matter?
Um, it really depends on what, what they, what they do with it. If they're going to intercept it with, uh, foundation drains, it depends on, um, uh, how frequent, uh, that water table is. Uh, like we mentioned before, if it's one month of the year, you maybe tolerate it. If it's like six months of the year, you know, where it's a water table that's consistently high, uh, then, uh, you should, you should take that into consideration. But for this one here, for this one here, it's kind of hard, because as I said, I know of one or two basements that they have been pumping out, but we had, the town hired a, an engineer, independent engineer, to do, um, some of the studies. And then they showed, which was a little bit surprising to us, but they showed a deeper, uh, water table than what we thought, so. It's, it's, it's a judgmental call. If you want to do three feet, you follow the stormwater quality manual, that, that's fine. But, uh, in our review, you know, if we've allowed other people to do two, you know, we should try to be consistent, so.
And if they're, so if they're, okay, I don't remember what.
So I would, I would, my, my professional experience is there should be a minimum of, in this case, two feet.
I think they said they were raising the basement a little.
Yeah, that's what I heard, too. They were raising the basement to get it out.
Was it originally, maybe someone can refresh my memory, it was supposed to be at ten feet?
Correct.
Which was right at where the water table might be, but then they raised it by two feet? Is the lowest level of the basement is going to be eight feet now instead of ten feet below grade? Is that how it was, but then depending on where the groundwater table is, that might not have a separation of two feet, it might have separation.
And, and, well, that, that brings up, even if we approved two feet and they dig, and then all of a sudden they hit the water table at, let's say, six feet or whatever, then that's going to be a change in the field, change in design. And then they have to, you know, either resubmit or, or present, uh, to the town, uh, these changes. And that's where, again, the tight fit of the area doesn't allow them, uh, that kind of luxury.
From digging into the water table, what is the reason you don't want to dig into the groundwater table? Is it to prevent leaking into the building or to prevent flooding in the rest of the town?
It's a combination, it could be water pressures, uh, against a foundation. It could be, um, like we mentioned before, where if they have to constantly pump, then, then, then they're adding to our stormwater system, because they're not, they don't have a stream or some other place to pump, uh, at that water.
And the stormwater system ends up where? That ends up in.
Well, that's Stanford Street, which is susceptible to flooding. It goes down Reef Road, it splits, and ends up in Pine Creek, Long Island.
And supposedly we're not supposed to add any water to Pine Creek from this site? That's what somebody, one of the papers said, we don't want to add any water, water to Pine Creek.
Well, and again, for stormwater, again, believe me.
That would be only stormwater.
The, well, if you're pumping groundwater, it's at least clean water, but you're, you're adding to it. I don't, I don't think it's that drastic, it's just the fact that, um, our storm system i- is an issue there. If they constructed their own, you know, pipe from here to the sound, then I don't think it would be an issue at all.
Well, they testified that they had no plans of putting any water into any of our systems. They would pump it out by a truck and take it somewhere. That's, please, that's my recollection of their testimony.
Yeah.
Which, which, again, if it's a small amount, one day, you know, fine, but if it's constantly, I mean, you hear stories of people, some pumps running twenty-four seven, I don't know how they would be bringing all those trucks. Um, so if there, if there is a concern, um, without, you know, judging, the, you know, the more information that they provide, the, the better, um, the better this commission or engineering or zoning can, you know, make decisions on, so.
That's my question.
Commissioner Harrison?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so this is in your professional estimation that this proposed development, it would increase localized flooding in this vicinity? Well, we know this area is prone to flooding, we, I go down.
Well, it has that potential, but again, based on, uh, the senior civilian here in our office, she said they met the, uh, stormwater, um, uh, the quantity, the runoff issues. So I, I, as I said, thirty-seven years with the town, I, I believe her review.
Does stormwater management system would function well with this development? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I think they provided enough detention, um, I mean, there was a minor comment on, on that that I had, where, um, they call these units, let me get it right, um, I think they were called Storm Tech M forty-five hundreds or something like that, uh, or MC forty-five hundred. Uh, we sometimes refer to them as rechargeers, uh, and, uh, the ones that they're proposing, um, are fifty-two inches, uh, wide, sixty inches high, and a hundred inches long. And I believe on, on one section, I know they had at least thirteen of them. So when it rains, uh, water from the roof leaders, uh, and perhaps, uh, any surface areas, get caught in, uh, either catch bases or the roof leaders and they tie into that system. Uh, that system, though, uh, according to the intervenor, and I did kind of agree with them, it could be a little bit clearer, because I had trouble myself when the water goes in, does it go into the rain garden first or does it go into these rechargeers first? Does it, uh, you know, which direction is it going? They did list a couple of grades, but having arrows and being a little bit more clear of their intent, I think, would help.
Thank you.
Uh, one, well, sorry, one other thing on that, uh, according to the manufacturer, they're supposed to have like nine inches of depth underneath. They only provided six. Now, underneath their detention system. Um, a right to deny, no, but in the same token, it, it's certainly something that, you know, they should improve or revise, uh, that they have.
Commissioner Francis?
The Malone and McBroom testing, there was only one on this site, wasn't there? And there was another one up, like where the anchorage is, which is a lot higher.
That's correct, yeah, there was only one on the site, I, I remember seeing that, yeah, so.
Is that really enough to?
Well, again, the Malone McBroom, they were looking at townwide.
Yeah.
And, you know, in, in, in some of the cases, you know, that's private property. And so we weren't gonna, you know, go crazy. It was really just to see if you had a situation. I mean, I'll give you the example of, if a proposal was to do a small, uh, I don't know, like, I think it was the one time the doctor's office there, but if they just made it into a hair salon or a dentist's office or something, you know, knocked down, rebuilt, and they only went three or four feet below, well then, you know, there's five foot of separation of the groundwater, no issues. You know, you got plenty of room, uh, to, uh, provide detention, you don't have to worry about that. So some of it plays into what they're proposing. You know, if it was a little bit smaller, as I said, they would, uh, um, they would have more room to, to improve, uh, some of the features that they're proposing.
Well, there's a lot of lack of detail on these plans, so it's hard for you to evaluate.
I'm, I can't.
Yeah, they do provide some, some good detail, and in other cases, you're right, it's just, it's a little, or we make an assumption that they went far.
Because it's hard for a professional to assess, so.
Um, I think that's all I have, unless you have any more questions.
Uh, Mr. Truman?
Of course.
Commissioner Braman?
So, uh, Mr. Hurley, you had mentioned a concern about pedestrians before, could you talk a little bit more about that?
Um, well, there, it's just, it's a concern where when cars, you know, come out of the driveway, uh, and in that one corner, there's a building wall, you know, you come out and you have to go up that, what was it, thirteen percent ramp? And then you kind of level off and, and you go out, uh, can they see, um, can they see a pedestrian that's trying to cross the driveway apron? I don't know, I don't know if they can. Um, somebody had, uh, mentioned, you know, that they might have like some windows or some ports in the wall so they can see on one side, but not the other. And to me, even if they're providing those ports, that kind of tells me, in my mind, that they have that concern deep down as well. You know, that they won't be able to see.
Do you think the cutouts in the wall or the other measures that they have in the design currently would adequately protect pedestrians, or you don't think that's sufficient?
Uh, it's better than not having them, but again, without really going into detail and seeing, you know, how big they are, how, you know, uh, what size the pedestrian, what size the car, you know, all that kind of stuff, it's kind of hard to say. But, um, I, I think, um, that, you know, because they're, um, I think one side had the ports and one didn't, if I recall. And that's for, I think, each, each driveway, so, um. That was, that was, actually, when you mentioned the wall, there was another concern, but again, we kind of touched base. I think they have a, I saw somewhere on the plan where it's a retaining wall, and again, it's right up to the property line.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't catch.
A retaining wall.
Okay.
It was a retaining wall, and same, much like the building, you know, the foundation, retaining walls have foundations.
Yeah.
So I don't know how they can build that. There, there are some that you can have cantilevered, or you can, uh, kind of do them L shape rather than what we call a T shape or something like that, but, um, you know, I don't know how high that retaining wall is. If it's significantly high, uh, you know, they're going to have to, uh, they should provide a design for that as well.
Are there standards for this, for that type of exit, um, that we have or engineering in general? Where you're coming out of a, a parking garage, uh, as far as, if you use the analogy of, like, uh, line of sight for, entering for cars, what that is, the analogy for pedestrians in this type of entrance and.
Um, I, I don't know if there's any, I mean, because we don't have, certainly.
We don't have, yeah.
Yeah, when I first started here, we didn't have any.
I'm trying to think of a property that has that, and I'm not really off the top of my head.
Yeah, I mean, there's a parking garage at BJ's and there's one at the Fairfield Center, you know, uh, those are the only two. Um, you know, where, uh, the bookstore is and the old Victoria's Secret, it's a, it's a parking deck.
Yeah, but I don't think there's one like where it's, you're coming up and down.
Right, and then down.
Even regardless of the down, even coming up.
Yeah, the closest one, uh, that might, uh, uh, would be the cinema, you know, the old cinemas. Underneath BJ's, there, there might be some situation there, uh.
Can you imagine, I think I've seen at least in the city, that's where New York City is lights and sound as far as.
I did not look at it. The other one, uh, that comes to mind is, I think some people call it the wedding cake. It's like by South Pine Creek, I think there's a garage, I, I'm not even sure, I haven't really gone in there. But I think that one might be down.
Uh, I'm not so sure.
Um, but again, but again, you can't always generalize, because a parking, let's just say, a parking garage where the walls or whatever are, and then let's just say you have a ten-foot grass strip and then have a sidewalk, that might be enough where pedestrians can see here, you know, and, and the cars coming could see in here. It's when you're right up against the property line, which means that the, in most cases, the sidewalk hugs the back of, the back of walk or the sidewalk is the property line, there, there's no, there's no room, there's no buffer.
And you have these, driveways are two ways, so you're going out, you're all the way to the right.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe you can see the left, okay, but when you're trying to see the right, you're going to be, if you're doing it right, inching out, inching out, I guess, but.
And, and again, I'm just, from my gut feeling, it goes back to utilizing the whole site. If they move this, all this, let's just, and again, I'm just saying if it was like eight, let's say eighty or ninety percent even, I don't know what the number would be, but if they reserve that, move the building back so it's not on the property line, you know, then, then it's possible that they can resolve a lot of these issues. I, I'm not saying, you know, they may not, they may, they may be able, but they may not.
Just to kind of maybe, uh, bring this to a head, at least with that. Sightline is easy because we kind of have the knowledge of what we need for ISC and all that stuff.
Right, yep.
This, we, we don't really have that kind of similar.
For pedestrians, you're referring?
For pedestrians.
Yeah, as, as far as I know, I mean, it might be out there, but I haven't uncovered yet.
Especially because in this town, it's not something to see every day.
Right, right.
That's, we've thought about maybe one, maybe two analogy, similar situation, so we just don't have that here. Um, so maybe they do in.
But I have seen it in other places of the city or where there's a wall and, you know, I, she, how do you.
Normally you see those with lights or sound, so to speak, to maybe even give warnings to the pedestrians.
Uh, yeah, or, or, of something, of some nature like that. They, they live with near misses or occasional pedestrian hit, I don't know.
I, yeah, I mean, I don't know, I can't imagine, to be frank, I can't imagine they do, because that's a little too harsh, but, um.
Well, I'm, I'm referring to like New York City.
No, I know what you mean, and I, I appreciate the sarcasm behind it as well, because I think that's fair. I tried to think a few times, I think I almost got hit as well, but any other questions? Uh, anything, otherwise I'm going to let them go home and eat. Mr. Hurley, thank you for your.
Oh, thank you, I hope, uh, I was clear enough for everybody.
No, I appreciate it. With Ms. Pooley gone, we'll be looking for your, uh, your name and emails for questions.
We do have a couple of new engineers that we're training as well, so. We do have a couple of new engineers that we're, um, training as well, so, oh, sure, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I understand we have one, uh, member of the public who made a request, uh, for, uh, to speak now, um, cause he had an engagement after this, um, Mr. Farnin, is it? Yeah, right, I'm, I'm, yeah, go on up. And I don't know if any, has anybody else made a request along those lines?
Nothing, I know that you can put it out there, but we'll see where we go.
Otherwise, we're gonna have, um, the standard is, uh, signups over there, I assume?
Yeah, they can just, I think, since they have to approach the table, maybe they can just simply raise their, and you can call on them, and then we can move to the folks that might be on the building.
Okay, but that, that sign-in sheet is not a-
No, that's, that's not a speaker list.
Sorry.
That's just, I'm sorry, just to clarify, the, the, the fire department, because this was a grant-funded building, requires a sign-in sheet for all of the clients, it's, it's for internal fire department purposes, that's a representative speaker list.
Okay, uh, so yes, we'll go, um, after this, unless there's any other, uh, requests, uh, first come, first served, people in the, live, and then remote. Mr. Farnin?
Sure, uh, thank you so much, and good evening, and thank you for all the hard work the commissioners do. Um, I'd just like to supplement some of the, uh, comments that I already submitted in, um, and I would go so far as to say that this is the, um, right location, but the wrong project. The size, height, and scope of this development will forever change the landscape of our downtown. Have you ever wondered why, in all the visuals that have been provided by the developer, we don't get the visual from the post road, looking up above towards the community theater? Cause what I think you would see at that, um, visual, and at that angle, would basically be the high-rise that this is, and I know there's been comments by the developer that this is not a high-rise, but if you look at the Encyclopedia Britannica, or the commonly, uh, used international business code, this does meet the definition of a high-rise. And the traffic, pedestrian safety, and flooding issues that we're dealing here, and have been brought onto the record, are, should be enough to reject this project as is. The proper project would be three to four potential stories, you would hopefully have mixed-use commercial on the first floor, that would help our, um, the taxpayers of Fairfield, that would help build a, uh, our, our tax base, that makes sense, this project does not make sense. Um, when I refer to the flooding, uh, that's something I submitted a video into, um, uh, testimony, uh, the attorneys for the developer mentioned that, well, this really isn't flooding, because you can see the feet of the individual taking the, uh, the video, I, I find that hard to believe, that that is a realistic defense to the flooding that we're well aware of in this area. Eight thirty G sadly is something that, you know, is gonna continue to be used as the hammer by these developers, and sadly, um, it's in place now, you know, the time for studies have passed, but even through the lens of eight thirty G, I believe the commissioners can reject this project, because of the, uh, well-laid-out traffic issues, pedestrian issues. I have spoken to the owners of various, uh, businesses downtown, and heard many of the pedestrian safety issues that exist today, and, um, I would say, you know, we have Fairfield institutions like, uh, La Spita and Captain Healthy Habit, and I would hate to see us lose them to a development like this. Um, I think it would just, it would impact, uh, what we are as a town of Fairfield, and I urge you as commissioners to reject this project. Um, I've also submitted into the testimony, the change.org petition, uh, that's been filed with approximately two thousand Fairfield residents against this project, and I know for an eight thirty project, eight thirty G project, that is not, um, you know, something that can be used for the criteria, uh, but I, but I do ask that you look hard at the pedestrian, the traffic issues that are well-known, because this project is just not the right project for this space. Thank you so much for your time.
Mr. Farnin, if you can just give your address, I forgot to ask you that.
Sure, uh, Brian Farnin, three ninety-four Rowan Road.
Thank you. Come on up, sir. Should we start a queue, or just take, um?
Your calls, Mr. Chairman.
No, just let it go naturally. If you can just give your name and address, um, please, thank you.
My name is Russell Jennings, I live at five twenty-five Winnipeg Drive. I was on vacation for the last session of this, so if some of the things that I talked about were, uh, ameliorated, uh, in the last session, uh, please give me a little, uh, slack there. The developer's representative made a big point, that below, the, the below-grade structure will be waterproof, showing he knows the challenges of this site. Formerly the site of Humphrey Hyde's Pond, even though no pond, the pond no longer exists, it is obviously geologically a favorable place where water naturally collects. When he stated that the water table is ten feet below grade, he tested when we were coming out of a three-year drought, and I believe his testimony said he tested in twenty twenty, and the, uh, McBroom and whatever their, my-
Malone and McBroom.
Malone McBroom, uh, tested in, uh, twenty nineteen. We were coming out of a three-year drought. We don't know what the current level, uh, water table is in Sanford Street. In his presentation, while the, they adjusted the floor of the garage will be above their measure of the water table, he didn't offer a clear answer as to the depth of the bottom of the concrete footings for the garage, which may be several feet below the floor of the garage. A building this size needs to be anchored to the bedrock, not to wetland soils, and in his testimony, he stated he does not know what type of soil lies beneath the development site. Sadly, we have seen the result of inadequate planning and design in the first renovation of the Penfield Pavilion. During construction, dry wells will be dug to collect rain and groundwater. These wells, obviously, will be even below their assessment of what the water table is. How could they collect water if they are below the water table? Uh, will the tanks that collect the car runoff, uh, which the, uh, adjusted, um, uh, plan was, it will be in a tank in a, in a, uh, uh, utility room? Will they need pumps to get the water into that tank? Presuming they will be collected from, uh, below the, uh, the garage floor, and then it would need to be pumped out. From the TV presentation, I couldn't discern where the caissons that collect the water from the roof and the paved areas will be placed, and whether their floors will be below the water table or not. While the water table changes very little, except during droughts, they are fed by the underground water seepage through soils and porous rock, and are concentrated in areas affected by soil type and impervious rock. Has the developer conducted a below-grade survey of this site to determine the conditions of the water collection? I suggest that the developer needs to hire an independent contractor, approved by the town, to verify the developer's plans and assumptions for this site. The developer stated that the caissons would put less runoff into the storm sewers than the current arrangement, and I forget what the, uh, what the, the measurement was, but he said currently three whatevers go into the storm sewer system now, and, uh, with their development, he said only two, uh, would go into the storm system. That adds, uh, more water, uh, from the caissons, that adds more water to the water table, at the same time, the waterproof garage will reduce the volume and capacity of the underground water sink. We know that water will flow to the lowest point, whether above ground or below, until it is interrupted by a barrier. My dad's grocery store was at the confluence of Bronson and Hillside Roads. When there was a heavy rain, a small stream would form in the basement, flowing from the upslope, uh, wall of the basement, down to the sump pump at the downslope side. When he added four stores attached to the uphill side of the grocery store, they were built on concrete pads without basements. Thereafter, the water flows in the basement of the grocery store were greatly reduced and much less frequent, but over time, the concrete floors of two of the stores gradually heaved, creating a two- and three-inch mound inside the stores. Years later, when renovations were done, a wood floor was laid over the concrete floor to correct this displacement. What liability does the, the developer have, uh, if surrounding properties are affected by the construction of the Uncle apartments? I suggest that neighboring prop, properties document their current conditions, should this development be approved. I have some other concerns, I asked the TPZ to ensure the ten-inch sanitary sewer is part of the sewer commission approval. The Sanford Street current sanitary sewer was installed when there were fewer active businesses on the street, and certainly did not anticipate a sixty-three unit apartment building there. In the nineteen fifties, when I went for my trumpet lessons at the Music Center, I passed Swat Sam's decrepit and abandoned blacksmith shop on Sanford Street, which I'm sure did not need a sewer hookup. The alternate plan would use the existing eight-inch sewer on Uncle Road, up to a capacity of more than eighty-one percent, which is more than the sewer commission's requirement of a twenty percent safety reserve and design. We all know what happens at halftime on Super Bowl Sunday, when thirty percent of the company, of, of the country, watching the game, suddenly get up and go to the bathroom. I couldn't see on the TV feed where the developer was pointing for the proposed ten-inch sanitary sewer, uh, route, but his word description sounded, uh, more like a million-dollar project, rather than he, his stated a hundred thousand dollars. This project has to cross the US One and the heart of Fairfield, and I think he said it has to cross twice. Another concern is the construction accommodations on Uncle Road. The developer will build scaffolding over the sidewalk, an important safety precaution for pedestrians and students walking to and from school. That means construction equipment would park on the street, dump trucks and wide-load cranes extending into the travel lanes on Uncle Road that is already very narrow. Each time I come over the railroad bridge and encounter a truck or school bus coming in the other direction, I worry that someday, fire or other emergency equipment on their way to four public schools or Fairfield University will meet a box truck or trailer, forcing a delay to an emergency. Ten months of construction is a gamble of response time to vulnerable children. If the construction access is confined to Sanford Street, which is very narrow, uh, the concerns are even worse. Parking for sixty-three apartments, uh, for sixty cars, with a site so near the train station, we can assume some cars will remain in the garage, uh, even on business days. Will the site parking be assigned? With the street parking limited to two hours, where are the excess residents and visitors' cars, uh, to, able to find a satisfactory spot? Adding to the sightline discussion, um, large, uh, SUVs, or, uh, the, the giant trucks that are popular now parked, will obstruct the views of smaller cars coming out of the driveway. Thank you for listening to my concerns, the responsible development of town property is the responsibility of this commission, I ask that you reject this plan.
I have a question for Mr. Farnin.
Yes, Commissioner Harrison.
Yeah, thank you very much, good to see you, um, can you just share how you, the knowledge that you have about this Humphrey Hyde pond that you mentioned?
Uh, it has come from some of the, uh, um, history books, uh, of Fairfield, um-
Where was it located?
Say?
Where was it located in that?
Uh, where the community theater is.
Okay, thank you.
Which is adjacent to this site. And I'm sure town records, uh, there, there must be some maps, if you, if you dig into it, uh, go back and show where it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public in this bill, in this room? Come on up, oh, sorry. Again, please just your name and, uh, address, thank you.
Good evening, members of the commission, uh, my name is Susan DeCarlo, I reside at two sixty-four Crestwood Road, which is in the university area. My husband and I have been residents of Fairfield for twenty-nine years, all of them on Crestwood Road. I am very familiar with the Sanford Street area, that is, as it is a route I have traveled on a regular basis for many years, as both my children's schools and my office are located a throwaway. I spent a significant amount of time familiarizing myself with the proposed application for a fifteen Uncle in a Road, I have reviewed the documents submitted by the applicant, and attended last week's TPZ meeting via WebEx. In short, I have very serious concerns regarding this application, with respect to safety and inadequate sewage and storm water management. With regard to safety, Sanford Street experiences a large volume of both vehicular and pedestrian traffic daily, because of its proximity to Fairfield Center. It is bordered by the Post Road at the south, and the Fairfield Train Station to the north. In between is the Fairfield Theater Company, several businesses, and five restaurants. Last week, on Wednesday, July twenty-seventh, the day after the last, uh, TPZ meeting, I spent one hour on the sidewalk in front of this proposed site, it was between five fifteen and sixteen, fifteen PM. And at that time, I saw a traffic accident between a fire truck and automobile, that was at the intersection of Post Road and Sanford Street, many pedestrians on foot, bike, and scooter, vehicles looking for parking spaces, making illegal U-turns, vehicles parked illegally, and traffic exiting the train station backed up at the Post Road light, and that traffic extended past both driveways of the proposed application. At one point, the large tow truck, which had came to clear the accident, turned north onto Sanford Street, and made the traffic, the travel of two-way traffic impossible. And I think, uh, Ms. Francis alluded to delivery trucks for the restaurant, well, that didn't happen between five and six PM, but I'm sure it happens during the day, on a regular basis. All of this occurred in a one-hour timeframe when the theater was closed. Today, I revisited Mr. Olinsky, who is from SLR, um, and the traffic, uh, expert, his testimony, and found his comments to be lacking basis. Please explain how a motorist exiting a building, built on the road with no step-back, can see an oncoming pedestrian or child on a bike on the sidewalk, much less an oncoming vehicle that is blocked from view due to parked vehicles. With regard to inadequate sewage and storm water management, there are many concerns highlighted in the testimony and report by Steve Trinkus of Trinkus Engineering, and here is my major takeaway. The applicant has not completed adequate testing to determine that the storm water management system is adequate to handle the volume of runoff that will be discharged from a building of this size. And no one has any idea how this project will impact water management and sanitary sewage systems. Water and how we manage it is already an issue. As mentioned last week, there was once a pond on the Fairfield Community Theater property, and it was mentioned tonight as well, and this area of town is subject to flooding on a regular basis. Mr. Trinkus noticed, noted that it is not uncommon for us to now experience significant rainstorms of short duration, but of higher intensity, and that could be noted in these photos, which were also, um, I got on the, on the website today, um, and they were taken about a month ago, when there was a, a storm of that proportion, um, and that was the flooding that occurred on Sanford Street. And food for thought, Mr. Trinkus referred to the ongoing issues of the town of Derry Anne- Anne, and he described flooding under the train trestle and sewage that came from manhole covers. Is this where the town of Fairfield is headed? If we allow this application to proceed, there is no turning back. There is no undoing this. We will have to live with the consequences which compromise the safety and well-being of every resident of this town. I respectfully ask you to deny this application. Thank you for your time.
Ma'am, just to confirm, you got those off the website?
Yeah, it was, somebody had submitted photos.
Just want to make sure we, anything's in the record.
Yes, everything's been posted now that we received, and those are photos that are previous.
Yes.
Good. Just want to make sure things are in the record, that's all.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, and feel free to step up. For anybody that's remote and wishes to speak, I think an announcement has been made via chat on WebX to sign up in the chat feature. So.
Is it?
Yes. Again, just your name and your address, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
If I can get into them. Ellen Jacob. I'm on Cedar Road, and I am always on the two roads that we've been talking about, the two previous speakers who were wonderful. They basically said everything. And so, I'm gonna be short, but not very sweet, I'm afraid. This application is so bad and so obviously inappropriate to our town, everyone who lives in it, all of you who work so hard with very few tools at your disposal because of eight-thirty G. This is like a dare because they can. And I think we have to get together as a town, and we have to get together in Hartford, but we can't let this go on. And I have faith that you'll ask the right questions, and you'll do your job, and you will deny this for all our sakes. Thank you.
Thank you. If it's quick, sir, just because we have a bunch. Thank you. If anybody else in the room wishes to speak as well, you're on deck, I guess.
Russell Jennings, five twenty-five Winterfold Drive. I'd like to think it was humility, but I have more than a passing experience with flooding. I was on the Flood and Erosion Commission for thirteen years, secretary for one year, and chairman for eight years. More than just my dad's cellar.
Thank you.
Thank you. Step up, please, yeah.
Good evening. My name is James McKay. I live at two eighteen Eastlon Street, and I work at fifty-five Walls Drive. I spend a lot of time driving around this area, and my brother lives in Mosswood. I was gonna read this straight out, because Uncle Road, within a half-mile, there's Ludlow High School, next to Ludlow Middle School, next to a condominium complex, next to a brand-new Anchorage apartment complex, next to Mosswood Condominiums, next to a large train station, next to FTC Concert Hall that can hold up to six hundred people, with Tomlinson Middle School across the street, not to mention the new five-story eight-thirty-G building next to the northbound station. I would argue that this road and neighborhood is already full. It's overpopulated, it's jam-packed, stuffed, overbuilt, overflowing, period. This proposal is being forced to fit at the cost of an iconic part of town through the misguided camouflage of eight-dash-thirty-G. It's sad and extremely disturbing, and common sense would suggest that it should be denied. Thank you.
Anyone else in person wish to speak? And again, I'll say this to anybody in person and remote, you are free to email comments to us. We do read the comments, and they are part of the record.
Is there a cutoff deadline for that?
Is there a cutoff deadline for that? I would think-
Until the hearing closes.
So, the hearing, until the hearing closes, the hearing will likely close August ninth. Likely. And if not, use that date anyways, please.
Mr. Chair, I haven't had anyone sign up in the chat as of yet.
Any member of the public in person wish to be heard? Again, our preference is in person before we go remote, but if something changes and you wish to speak, just let me know. But I want to turn to remote if I don't see anybody's hand. Okay. Oh, yes. Again, please, just your name and address. Thank you.
I'm Annalise McKay. I reside at two eighteen Eastlon Street. Lived here in Fairfield for almost thirty years. I've raised both my children here. They being close to town, their school system have all been central to the center of town. They spent most of their years at Sherman School in portable classrooms, which I believe are still there. We are condensed, we're packing this neighborhood with population that I'm not sure the schools can handle, and putting sixty-three units in an already condensed area will further exacerbate, strain the school system, because we also have another eight-three-G going in on Beach Road, I believe, and two on Old Field. This concerns me. It also concerns me because the young people's life, Friday afternoon, the schools open up and they stream down Old Field, Uncle Road, where most of our youth are now coming to go to Las Vegas and the pizza places and the things in town. Putting a major construction site there while these overflow of students come in for ten months is greatly concerning. It's highly trafficked intersection of Uncle and Old Field that backs up at major commuter times, school openings and closings. It already can back up for quite a while. When I ninety-five gets backed up, the overflow all ends up down the Post Road and Old Field Road, further gridlocking that area. I don't think a major, out-of-scale apartment building is appropriate for this area. Also, it's the heart of downtown retail. Taking away where these students go by eliminating Las Vegas and the retail ground-floor establishments, I think is a mistake. This is the heart of our retail area. Eliminating that is a big mistake. It's not appropriate for this area. I'm for affordable housing, because now my children are young adults, looking for affordable housing. They would like to remain in the area, and it's very difficult. But a lot of these buildings are limited affordable housing and mostly luxury housing, which costs more than my own house does. So, I don't see it resolving the affordable housing problem, and it's just making a very dense area more crowded and, I think, dangerous when it comes to community quality of life. And it's the worst possible location for something like this. Thank you.
Anyone else in person? Once, twice, not the end, but I'm just gonna go to what looks to be a bigger pool, though nobody in chat, I hear. Miss Harrigan, still nobody in chat?
Nobody yet.
Okay, then I will make just a general announcement. To anybody who is joining us remotely and wishes to speak, first, I just need to hear if you wish to speak. Star six will get you off of mute. Again, star six will get you off of mute if you are-
We have Kathy O'Donnell would like to speak.
Great. And can, to anybody else, if you can please sign, not, excuse me, not sign in, but use the chat feature if you are able to. If you're calling in to get yourself off mute again, it's star six. But, Ms. O'Donnell.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, great, thank you. My name is Kathy O'Donnell. I live at one-five-four Blaine Street, and I am a lifelong resident of the town of Fairfield. I served on the Conservation Commission for close to ten years, so I was very, very interested in all the presentations, particularly as it relates to drainage and environmental concerns. So, I thank everybody for the presentations of the past few weeks of times that you've talked about this project. I'd like to add my voice in opposition to this outrageous proposed development in the core artery of our town. If you look at any other roadway that has access to downtown Fairfield, this roadway is never going to be expanded. It has a bridge over Metro North. It is never going to be wider than it is right now. And when you, as the former speaker talked about, the two, the high school, the two middle schools, the train station, it's an artery from the beach population, Fairfield youth students who go to Fairfield University, they drive up Uncle Road, and when school's in session, it is a very, very congested place. And it's not able to expand the road to suit the traffic that would inevitably be coming if we had this kind of monstrosity in downtown Fairfield. The height of five-and-a-half, half-story building on a hill, which will give the perception of it even being higher, will forever change the landscape and the townscape that our citizens have come to enjoy over the years. You know, a great deal of time and energy was put into the restoration of the community theater. It looks lovely there. It's a gathering place. This will overshadow everything, and you will be able to see this from a great distance. As a lot of people have commented, that other affordable housing apartment on the other side of the train station is frankly an eyesore, but this one would be even more so. Addition to all of that, the flooding, the lack of adequate parking, the drainage issues onto Sanford Street, which already presents some issues, extreme building height, and access to and from the building, as the gentleman last weekend spoke about how people would be able to come in and out, and the parking that has to be lost on the street in order to accommodate the turnaround, is all detrimental to the citizens of this town. There's nothing to stand to gain, and I would fair to say that the people who would be residing in that building wouldn't be too pleased with it either. So, there are significant issues, I believe, that have been presented to the committee, and I hope that you will take up serious consideration and send this proposal back to whomever presented it and to deny it without prejudice. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. O'Donnell. I see nobody else has signed up in chat, so I will make another announcement. To anybody remotely attending who wishes to be heard, if you can please just speak up. If you are calling in. Yes, hi.
Hi, my name's William Burke. My office is at the corner of Post and Sanford. I've sent in a bunch of photos, which I think you've gotten. I just like to agree with the engineer who spoke earlier today and the engineer who spoke for the, the intervenor. You know, there are a lot of safety concerns. There's not enough parking here. There is a scarcity of parking in that area, especially when you, you know, realize that the pandemic at some point will be over. This is just not gonna be a good situation. It's also gonna be a safety problem in terms of people who are trying to get on the train, who aren't necessarily looking at this sort of New York City-style cars coming directly out of buildings onto the sidewalk type approach, because, you know, people are often focused either on their phones, or if they're trying to catch a train, on the train that, you know, may or may not be coming in when it should be, and often they're looking ahead at the train tracks instead of directly in front of them. So, you know, this whole zero clearance to the sidewalk is just a recipe for disaster. And finally, I agree that, I also was around for the fire truck versus SUV accident last week, and, and, you know, Sanford Street during the mornings is essentially a loading dock for the restaurant, and, and as Commissioner Francis mentioned, now you're gonna have cars trying to get around, pretty big trucks that are parked there, and they're just not moving. So, I would urge you to credit the experts for the intervenor and the expert from the town over the experts who are paid to play from the developer, experts who said things like, like, well, not good is not the same as bad, and, you know, we heard what you didn't like about the last proposal, which if they did, they managed to make this one worse. So, I would urge you to deny this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Any other member of the public wishes to be heard? Again, if you're calling in, star six, unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello. Hi, my name is Chris Linford. I live at six thirty-four Bronson Road. I've been at the past couple meetings, and I have to say first off, I'm kind of upset I didn't know about tonight's meeting, because I had checked last week after Tuesday's meeting, and I see it was just posted on seven-twenty-nine, and if I didn't get Brian and Michael Grant's email tonight, just a little while ago, I would have had no idea this was going on. So, that concerns me that other residents also don't know what's going on. So, as I said, I've written a couple times, I've been there, I don't want to take up much more of your time, but obviously, I'm very against this as well, for the same reasons. I think all the speakers tonight were, I'm so impressed with Russell and the knowledge, and I'm a new resident, so I would like to give a new resident outlook, because everybody else has been here for so long and with so much history and information, and it's wonderful. But, as a new resident, I came to Fairfield, I live in Southport, I live on Mill River, and I came here from New York for, for these, a beautiful, small town that it was. And I feel like since I've been here, the over, in two years, it's less than two years, the over densifying, the constant fighting, Aquarian, the water diversion, the trees, I feel like we're always battling the eight-thirty-G, it's always something. And it's relentless, and this small, quaint, like, still densified town that I came to that was like a suburb is now quickly, quickly getting out of control. So, I am concerned, because I do feel like all of these things, the infrastructure is not there at all. Obviously, that, that's, you know, been said. I feel like all these experts, the architects, you asked them last time, two meetings ago, we want to see the facade. Show us what the facade is gonna look like. Obviously, eight-thirty-G doesn't care about aesthetics, but I'm sorry, mental health cares about aesthetics. And this, this horrible, tall, like, carnivorous building over the pub, the new restaurant, the theater, everything that has been restored and looks so small-town beautiful is now going to be overshadowed. And so, I ask, like, how does this happen so quickly? All of these, and someone made a very good point, the gray building across the street, I don't know how, I wasn't paying attention at the time, because like I said, I'm a new resident. So, all of a sudden, this gray building starts being built, and what is it? I looked online last week, the three-bedroom, two-bathroom apartment that is two thousand square feet is going for eight thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars, and that is considered fair market value. And meanwhile, there are eight apartments in that building that are eight-thirty-G. That will only last for forty years, and then after forty years, they will go to fair market value, and what will that be in forty years? And I just don't think our infrastructure and our residents should have, can handle this over densifying at, at this expense, it's the game, like someone said, under the guise of thirty, eight-thirty-G, these developers are coming in and being able to do all this. And lastly, I'd like to say, I did some research about the developer, and he's like, he's a- a homeopathic doctor. And that's kind of like, that to me, okay, the developer is a homeopathic doctor that cares about the whole body. So, honestly, this is giving me a whole lot of angst, and I'm sure a lot of other people. So, I have a problem with that. So, I'm going to close in that, because I don't want to take any more time. I hope other residents found out at the last minute and can come up and speak. But I do certainly hope that you will either, you know, negate this, or come up with a compromise that is suitable to our community. And not five stories, it has to be within what is, what is there right now. So, thank you for listening, and I thank all of you for your all excitement and history. Thank you.
Thank you. And as I understand, and I believe we announced today's meeting as the last meeting, but I wish.
I was there at the last meeting, so I didn't hear it. So, I did have to leave at 10 o'clock, so, or quarter to 10, so that could be why.
Okay. And I apologize, I don't mean to be argumentative, but just stick for the record.
No, no, you're not at all, you're not at all, you're not at all. I was just upset, because I was checking all week, but I didn't check on Friday. And then I was like, wait a second, what, there's a meeting already? So, that's all.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Does any other member of the public wish to be heard, either in person or remotely? Again, if you're calling in, star six, unmute yourself so you can announce yourself. I still see nobody else in the chat. Again, as I said, anybody who wishes to submit any emails or additional, anything else to the record may do so preferably before the next meeting, which will be next week, the 9th, August 9th, same time, same place, same ability to be online. Any other member of the public wish to be heard? In person, remote, et cetera?
You may wish to mention, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
No, Mr. Wentz.
Next meeting is, intention is reserved for applicant rebuttal, so this would be the last effective opportunity. So, if anybody is holding out, this would be the time to go.
Yes, I'll give my auctioneer's impersonation in a second, but this is the last chance, at least, to speak to the commission. As I said, you can certainly submit emails, preferably before the 9th, but up until the 9th. But this is the last chance to speak to the commission directly, I guess, is the way to phrase it. Going once, twice. I'll end the public portion of the comment, public comment portion of the hearing. We will turn to rebuttal next time. I assume Attorney Smith, I see you up there. I understand that's what you, you discussed, what you discussed last time, which is more than fair. Any housekeeping matters, anything you want to do tonight, or should we just adjourn for the night?
No, no, Mr. Chairman.
I think you're on mute. Oh, never mind, you're not.
Nope, sorry.
Sorry, I thought you were on mute, but you're not, so please.
I was just responding, but if somebody else had something to say, I'll stand down, of course, so.
No, no, it's, as I said, the public comment portion is over. I understand your rebuttal will start next week. I suspect, the ball's in your court, so to speak, I suspect you'll finish at that point. I don't think we have, we have a light agenda otherwise.
We do. We have one other matter that we're time-bound to hear on the 9th, that I don't expect to take more than 15 minutes. It will proceed rebuttal, so that the bulk of the evening will be with respect to whatever the applicant wants to put on.
We have no old business, I think, right?
We'll have no, we'll have a limited administrative agenda, if any, before that.
So, I suspect Attorney Smith, you'll be fine for finishing next time?
For the record, Mr. Chairman, good evening. Chris Smith, on behalf of Walter &amp; Pearson, on behalf of the owner-applicant 15 Uncle Road LLC. Just would like to indicate for the record that we had, I believe, all of our consultants, but our architect was participating remotely. And the game plan, as you indicated, Mr. Chairman, is to return next Tuesday and in the short timeframe as best we can, and to provide you with our rebuttal.
Yeah, and obviously, somewhat the night is yours, so to speak, and we'll see where we go from there. But I would suspect we'll be okay.
Okay, and thank you.
With that, we'll keep the meeting open, but close the meeting tonight. The hearing obviously remains open, but we're done for this evening. Thank you.